Happy New Year. I'd like to call to order the Stafford County Board of Supervisors 2015 Annual Organizational Meeting. The clerk will call the roll, please.
Ms. Bonkey?
Here.
Mr. Cavalier?
Here.
Mr. Melday?
Here.
Ms. Sellers?
Here.
Mr. Snellings?
Here.
Mr. Sterling?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. County Administrator, you have a question.
Please stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Give us, Lord, a humble, quiet, peaceable, patient, tender, and charitable mind. Give us, Lord, a lively faith, a firm hope, a fervent charity, a love of you. Take from us all lukewarmness and mediation, dullness in prayer. Give us fervor and delight in thinking of you and your grace, your tender compassion towards us all. The things that we pray for, good Lord, give us the grace to labor for. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
After the following very brief statement, I'll open the floor for nominations for Chairman of the Board of Supervisors. Our first order of business tonight will be the election of the Chairman of the Board. Once the nominations are complete, the Board will vote in the order in which the nominations were received. The floor is now open for nominations for Chairman, Mr. Sterling.
Nominate Mr. Snellings?
Mr. Sterling nominates Mr. Snellings. Are there other nominations? Hearing none. The nominations are closed. The Board is now voting on Mr. Snellings for Chairman. Please cast your vote.
You lose this vote, that's a really bad outcome.
Tally the vote. Motion carries seven to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Snellings. The Chair will now entertain a motion for Vice Chairman.
I nominate Ms. Sellers.
Are there any other nominations? Cast your vote. Congratulations, Ms. Sellers. We will now take a five-minute recess so the tickets can be rescheduled.
There is. Let me...
Try it again. Okay. The Board will now come back into session. First thing is to discuss the 2015 Board of Supervisors meeting calendar. If everyone's had a chance to read that, I'll entertain a motion.
All in favor? Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion passes seven to nothing. Appointments to Boards, Authorities, and Committees. Now, this could be a little long, but I think we can get through it rather quickly because most of this doesn't require any reappointments. First one is the ADA Grievance Committee. We have a vacancy member at large. Does any Board member have someone to put forward? If not, we'll move on and come back to it. There is no change to the Advisory Board. Ms. Sellers, you're up for reappointment on the Agricultural PDR Commission?
Right now, I'm still looking for somebody interested in garrisoning.
Okay. There's no change to the ARB.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Excuse me. Sir, if I can, the Advisory Board for Law Enforcement, Towing, and Private Trespass, those do need to be reappointed.
Yes, you're right.
And we understand the whole slate wishes to be reappointed.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'm sorry?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion passes seven to nothing. The Agricultural Review Board at Centerport, no changes. Board of Building Code Appeals, no change. No change to Social Services. I need a motion to reappoint Board of Zoning Appeals, Heather Steffel, wishes to be reappointed. She is now alternate member. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I do have somebody I'm talking to, so I'll probably do that next minute.
Mr. Chairman, that would be R. 1501. That requires a special resolution for us to take that to Circuit Court.
Okay. Okay.
I'm not clear, are we...
So, do we need a motion now?
Have we reappointed someone right now? Are we waiting?
He's talking about his...
She wants to be reappointed as an alternate. Okay. Then we need a motion to move her as an alternate. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion passes seven to nothing. We do have a vacancy in the Rock Hill, which Mr. Sterling's working on. Central Rapid Regional Laboratory Board of Trustees, Dr. Smart, wishes to be reappointed. Mr. Thomas, you could be reappointed.
Did Dr. Smart respond? As of the package he had?
He did.
Good, okay.
You okay with that?
Yes, please.
Okay. Any discussion? Do I have a motion to reappoint?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion passes seven to nothing. We do have a vacancy in the Rock Hill, which Mr. Sterling's working on. Central Rapid Regional Laboratory Board of Trustees, Dr. Smart, wishes to be reappointed. Mr. Thomas, you could be reappointed.
Did Dr. Smart respond? As of the package he had?
He did.
Good, okay.
You okay with that?
Yes, please.
Okay. Any discussion? Do I have a motion to reappoint?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Civil Military Community Relations Council, currently Mr. Sterling and Mr. Thomas. Your terms expire. Mr. Sterling, are you willing to?
I would like to see somebody else take that decision.
Is anyone else interested in taking that?
And if you don't volunteer, I will nominate somebody.
I'll go ahead and do it. I used to do it, so...
Oh, okay.
All right. I'll move both those new people. I want a new person to reappoint.
Mr. Thomas, are you okay with serving another term?
Yes.
Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion passes seven to zero. Community Policies Management Team...
I'll move to reappoint Ms. Sellers.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion passes seven to zero. No change on Economic Development. Member meal Community Development Authority, we have two. Neither one have responded.
When did they get notified or asked?
I sent out the first notification the week of Thanksgiving.
Oh, so it has been some time. Well, that's in your district necessarily. So, kind of the first...
Can we fully hold on it?
Yes. Yes, you can hold on.
Yeah, the other guys are mine, too.
Yeah, somebody who lives in...
Correct. Oh, absolutely.
Mr. Chair, question for clarification. Just in case they have a meeting, do they hold over or not if we don't do anything tonight?
Yes, they would.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we'll defer that. Fire Prevention Code, there's no change. The FAMPO. Ms. Sellers, you are up for reappointment to alternate, Mr. Sterling.
Mr. Chair, I would actually then, in this case, move that Ms. Sellers be made the permanent member with the new job. I've taken the hours and the challenge there, so I would nominate or propose that Ms. Sellers take that.
All right.
You have an issue with that?
No.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
So moved. I mean, second, sorry.
Second by Mr. Melday. Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Let's redo that. Tally the votes.
My court is covering.
Seven to zero. Passes seven to zero. Now, I need an alternate. Does anyone like to... Would anyone like to serve as an alternate, taking Ms. Sellers' place?
I thought Court was going to be the alternate.
No, I...
Do you want to be the alternate?
Yeah, he wants to be able to come and participate if you need to. Believe me, yes.
Are you nominating, Mr. Sterling?
Yes.
Do I have a second to the nomination?
Okay.
Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion carries seven to zero. Mr. Cavalier, Ferguson Regional Alliance, would you like to continue?
Yes, please.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion passes seven to zero. Seats held by, this is George Washington Regional Commission, GWRC, all are up for reappointment. Mr. Melday, Ms. Sellers, myself, and Mr. Thomas, is everyone willing to serve another term?
Yep.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second? Second by Ms. Sellers. Cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. No change to Jemina Community College Board. No change to Hidden Lake. No change to Historical. Okay. On the IDA Authority Stafford County and Staunton, we just got word that Ms. Griffin does not want to serve another term. She has resigned.
Mine has a big line through all of it. Is there a reason for that?
Yeah, so does mine.
Look at the next page.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Griffin has resigned from the Authority, and I know this is short notice, so we probably don't have anyone, but if anyone can...
Mr. Snellings?
Yes.
I spoke with Robert Lauterberg with the IDA, and he suggested that Gary Atkins become the permanent member as opposed to a rotating member. It would be rotating over to the city of Stanton to take that position up until July 1.
Okay.
I talked to Mr. Atkins earlier today, and he is willing to assume that full position. And I'll have that on the January 20 meeting consent agenda for approval.
Okay, thank you. So, we'll move on to the next one. Local Finance Board, OPEP. Ms. Bonkey, you willing to serve another term?
Yes.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Passes seven to zero. No change to MAC?
Oh, no.
Whoop, I'm sorry.
Needs to be a change to MAC.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Sterling.
Would that be appropriate to put Jack on that also? Are they...
Sure. His district board is...
Sure.
Okay. No problem.
So moved.
Do I have a second for Mr. Cavalier?
Is that the primary alternate?
That is alternate.
What you guys want, between the two of you?
Your primary. Cast your votes. Motion passes seven to zero. Parks and Rec Commission, we have a vacancy in the Garrisonville District.
Yeah, they'll have that name due next week, or next meeting.
Very good, thank you. Planning Commission, no change. VRE, Potomac Rapid Transportation Commission, no change. No change to Potomac Watershed. Rapid Area Agency on Aging. We're going to hold off on this one because this is an advisory council, and we're awaiting word back from the executive director as if they're going to continue what the status of the advisory council is. So, we're going to defer this to the next meeting. Rapid Area Agency on Aging, I am up for reappointment, and since I'm the oldest member of the Board, I'll continue to serve if the Board's pleasure wants me to do so. Ms. Schwartz, however, has indicated she does not wish to be reappointed. So, if anyone has a... Someone they'd like to appoint, this commission meets once a month at 4:00 PM on a Wednesday.
Is there a requirement on that? Is it, you'd be a member at large? Yeah. Yeah, just... Chairman, I'll move you for reappointment, and I guess we'll wait and see what happens with the next...
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. If any of you have a replacement for Ms. Schwartz, please pass it to the clerk with a Board back application.
I think it's again?
They meet on a Wednesday. I think it's the third Wednesday of the month, but I can verify that, at 4:00 PM. They usually serve pretty good food, too. Rapid Area Airport Safety Action Program, there's no change. Community Services Board, no change. Community Criminal Justice Board, Mr. Romanello currently serves. His term is expired, and I'm assuming, Mr. Romanello, that you're willing to serve another term.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. That's a slot for the county administrator.
Right.
That's not...
You don't want to come, sir.
Not much.
Why do we have to reappoint you?
Put a deputy in.
Why don't you just let it ride?
I think either way would be fine.
Next year, we'll let it ride. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I moved.
Second. Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to nothing. June Detention Commission. Ms. Collins' seat, she's an alternate to the county administrator, is up for reappointment.
Yes, sir.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion passes seven to zero. Criminal Justice Academy.
So moved.
Sheriff Jett and Mr. Romanello. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion passes seven to zero. No change on Regional Jail.
I'd like to put Court on landfill board. How do I do that?
I'll step aside if you'd like to step in.
I don't think anyone wants that, I'll tell you that.
I'm proud of the landfill board, and I'm happy to be on it.
We have three up for reappointment. Mr. Melday, myself, Mr. Thomas is alternate. Mr. Thomas, would you like to step up from alternate to permanent?
I'd like to let somebody else be an alternate.
Good answer.
Are you saying you want to wash your hands of the entire thing?
You messed it all up, you're going to walk away from it. Come on.
That's a good pun for the...
Someone's going to stay here.
Would you like to continue at least as alternate, Mrs.?
That's fine.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Please cast your votes. Tally the votes. Yes, it's all three. Motion carries seven to nothing. Rapid River Basin Commission, Ms. Bonkey, alternate, Mr. Thomas, full member, both up for reappointment. Are you both willing to serve?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll move it.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Please cast your votes. Tally the votes. Passes seven to zero. No change on Rapid Field Services. Airport, no change. I'm sorry, Mr. Sterling. Telecommunications. I had to get that in. All have indicated a willingness to serve except Mr. Minor. We're on Telecommunications Commission, TCC.
Yeah. I'm looking for another member.
Mr. Cavalier's looking for another member. We'll defer that. No change to the Thurman-Brizvan Center. On the Transportation Advisory Group with TAG, which has worked with FAMPO, we have three vacancies, and now we have four.
Sorry to interrupt. I've got a little sidetrack on this Telecommunications Commission. It looks like a bunch of them need to be...
They need to be reappointed.
We need to make a motion for the...
Where are we at here?
No.
I'm sorry, you're right. You're exactly right.
Which one isn't getting reappointed?
Mr. Minor.
I'll move all of this, the whole slate, except for Mr. Minor.
Do I have a second? Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Thank you, Mr. Melday, for bringing that to my attention. If it's not highlighted on here, I just go around to it.
Sorry, my fault.
No, it's not your fault. It was mine. I didn't do the highlighting. We have three vacancies on Transportation Advisory Group. This is an advisory group to FAMPO, and Ms. Griffin has made us aware that she is resigning effective immediately. So, if anyone had... Does anyone have any names they'd like to put forth tonight? Seeing no one stepping forward, we will defer that. Two of these members are alternate, one is a member at large. No change to Transportation Impact Fee Board. No change to Tri-County Circ... Utilities Commission, there's no change. Wetlands Board.
I'll remove both those highlighted names they both...
Yes, that's Mr. Hess and Mr. Riuda.
Riuda.
I have a second. Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Does any Board member have any names for a member at large, alternates for that Board?
No, I don't know how we always end up with vacancies here, but I can find some.
Yeah, if you can find somebody, that'd be great, and bring it back. This is a Wide Water Community Development Board, and we're saying, from what I'm reading here, we can't get a majority to get together. Is that correct, Mr.?
No.
No?
I don't think they exist.
But they... We did, but it's my understanding they have to get together to dissolve.
They do, Mr. Chairman, and we're in the process now of working with the Highway Department on a project, which we would ask the Board to allocate the funds that are in the CDA account. Once that is done, then we would convene the CDA, and they would recommend their end.
Okay, thank you.
There's $1.2 million in that fund right now that could not be returned. I'm sorry.
What's the project?
Telegraph Road and the Route 1 intersection, which has been a problem for years or so. We'd need more money than that, but it would be a good start, and we have to go through, I guess, with FAMPO and CTB for that, correct?
That's right, and Mr. Dayton is working with the local VDOT folks on that project. We should have something to the Board this spring.
Okay, so we'll hold off on this until that decision is made.
Yes, sir. Great, thank you.
And the last one, Workforce Investment Board, there is no change. And that's the whole group. Now, a question for you, Mr. County Administrator. There are 49 boards and commissions. Could you, at your leisure, find out how many of these are mandated?
Yes, be happy to. Okay, thank you.
We went through this drill before.
I think we did. I think they're all mandated. I think we did. But what my goal here is to eliminate some.
We talked... We had a bunch of... That's how you got PDR and...
Yeah, we did. Did that a couple of years ago.
Beautiful case, isn't it?
Okay. Appointments to Board of Supervisors Standing Committees. Community and Economic Development.
I'd like to stay on that.
Mr. Cavalier and Mr. Thomas?
Like to stay.
Do I have a motion to reappoint Mr. Melday, Mr. Cavalier, and Mr. Thomas? Do I have a second? Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion carries seven to zero. Finance Audit and Budget, we have Mr. Cavalier, Mr. Thomas, Mr. Sterling. I'm going to defer to you.
I could nominate Mr. Thomas, Mr. Cavalier, and Ms. Sellers to be on the Finance Audit and Budget Committee. The end of it.
Ms. Sellers, you willing to serve?
Willing to serve.
Do I have a second? Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion passes seven to zero.
That's a great one, Mr. Chairman. You did a lot of great work on that committee.
He did. Infrastructure, Mr. Sterling.
Mr. Chair, I would nominate yourself, Ms. Snellings, Mr. Cavalier, and Mr. Melday to serve on the infrastructure.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion carries seven to zero. Public Safety, myself, Ms. Bonkey, and Ms. Sellers currently on the Public Safety Committee. Do I have a motion?
I'm here to keep us on there.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion carries seven to zero. Legislative Affairs, Mr. Sterling.
Mr. Chair, somebody needs to take this spot on this. I'd move, right, Ms. Bonkey might like that?
Or Mr. Thomas?
I'm not sure who would like to join Ms. Sellers on Legislative Affairs.
Would somebody like to join Ms. Sellers on Legislative Affairs?
I'll take that.
Ms. Bonkey says she will take it. Are you putting down a form of motion?
With the form of motion, Ms. Bonkey, and Ms. Sellers to be legislative.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion carries seven to zero. Joint Schools Working Committee, Mr. Sterling.
I'll continue on that.
I'm sorry?
I'll continue on that.
Okay. I have Mr. Sterling, Ms. Bonkey, and Ms. Sellers. Ms. Bonkey and Ms. Sellers, you willing to serve?
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
Moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion passes seven to zero. Bylaws Committee. Mr. Thomas, Ms. Bonkey, you served last year. Would you like to do that one more time?
Sure. We didn't have a lot of business.
Good, I'll move.
I'll say...
I have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion carries seven to zero. I've asked the rest of the Board to get any input back to Mr. Thomas or Ms. Sellers concerning bylaws, recommended changes, and I'd ask the clerk to please get all members a copy of the bylaws so that we can do that. On the back page. Telecommunications broadband, I have Mr. Melday, Mr. Snellings, Mr. Thomas, and Mr. Moulton, TC Chairman.
We don't... We haven't met.
I don't think we've ever met. Is there a reason, Mr. County Administrator, to keep this?[1623.12]
No, no, sir. I, I think that, that back page shouldn't be on there. We, I think you've covered them all with the ones that were on the agenda, the, the board's standing committees. These are some older ad hoc committees.
That works for me.
Yes.
Okay, with that said, we are move on to presentations by the public. I do not have any speaker cards, but if you wish to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and address. You have three minutes to speak on any subject that you desire. The three lights, the green light is a go. The yellow light is a caution. You have about a minute left. When the red light comes on, please wrap up your comments. Is anyone to my right that would like to address the board? Seeing none, is anyone on my left? Please come forward.
Paul Waldowski, A. Pickin Lane. We're going to celebrate the twenty-five-year anniversary of me being in Stafford County, just like you did a three-hundred-and-fifty-year anniversary. I expect $25,000. I use my exploratory committee, um, unfortunately, to announce to the board that I can only run in one district. I wouldn't run in George Washington anyway because that's cherry-mandered from King George. And I'm glad you got that new promotion, Mr. Sterling. Maybe I'll consider 2015, but probably not. Now, I know you're trying to get rid of forty-nine boards. I'm trying to get rid of two school board members because we have five high schools. So now you know my aspect. As far as the bylaws go, um, I brought this up before. Richmond, I think, is now addressing this, that, uh, when we have three-way elections in the county, we want fifty percent representation. And even if you're a Democrat, if you win by fifty-one votes, that's okay. Aging, huh? I turned sixty-two last year, so I want you all to stay gainfully employed because, uh, I need that money for my Texas Hold'em buy-ins. You know, I came here with the back of the envelope. Had no idea what I was going to talk about, but it is the fourth quarter for some of you. You know, that's the fourth year of your term. So I personally categorize you as a lame duck unless you announce your, uh, candidacy of where we're going to be going. So, as you all know, Resolution eighty-two dash three forty-one, if you saw my email, I addressed it well, boys and girls. I gave you all the facts. And I'm not giving up until I get that county water and sewer bill for the constituents in my subdivision. So, uh, hopefully we have new leadership. Maybe we can get something done. Now, I have a donut back there and that's real good food, okay? And on Christmas Day, I've got a picture too. Maybe I'll bring it to, uh, I'll send it off so we can bring it up for everyone to see. There was three empty police cars, um, right outside Dunkin' Donuts on Christmas Day at 7:30 PM. Can you believe that? And I was in the Chinese restaurant, but that's where they really were. Now, the committee that really gets me is about no change, is about towing and trespassing. And that's one committee I really believe that we need to look at because you have people on there who have no idea what towing is. They have no idea what trespassing is. They have no idea what Virginia law is. And I'm very famous for the February fourteenth. It'll be the ten-year anniversary of a 2005 case where a tow truck driver stole my car. Happy New Year, everyone. I'm back.
Thank you, Mr. Waldowski, and it's a pleasure to have you back. Anyone else on my left that would like to speak? Seeing none, I close public presentations. We'll bring it back to the board for board member comments. Your clerk, please call.
Ms. Bomke? Uh, yes, I just wanted to say that another board that I've been asked to be on is the Rappahannock Council Against Sexual Assault. And their first meeting is this, uh, Thursday. So, uh, it's a not-for-profit foundation and it's obvious what it's for, but it's a regional, um, a regional foundation. And so I'll report to you as I have information that's pertinent to the county. Thank you.
Mr. Cavalier?
I just wanted to congratulate Mr. Snellings and Ms. Sellers for their selection as chairman and vice chairman for this year. Much success.
Mr. Milley?
We got a, Happy New Year. We got a couple of things done after our last board meeting in December. We, um, had another, had a Quantico Regional Electric, uh, Executive Sharing Committee meeting, which are always long. We squeeze as much as we can into two hours, working with the base, Falkirk County, Princeville County. Working on things that have to do with the base and how they interact with the neighboring communities. Some of that, we saw some email traffic on, like shared services, but also land use. Working with the Marine Corps. It's interesting there. Things are moved very slowly and, uh, nobody makes decisions quickly, but we make, we're definitely making progress. Uh, I went to Germanus for the first time in my, down in my tenth year. First time on the board, I went to a Germanic Community College graduation, which was really with Laura, which was nice and it was really, it was great to see so many people graduating. They, they're, they're just doing better and better. They're, they're having to take up more and more space for these graduations. Uh, Stafford Tekken Research Park, met a couple of times last month, but we finalized, uh, we, at the very last minute, you know, we had the last meeting at 7:30 AM on the nineteenth to fulfill a requirement that we, uh... Tim would be better describing it, but we had a grant from the state for a strategic plan and it took a lot of work and we developed a lot of great, uh, information that you guys will be, have presented to you. And we finalized that on, uh, on Friday via remit. That was my last board, full board meeting as a chairman, but I get to have a gavel for a few minutes and turn it over on, uh, this month. We'll keep an eye on that. Lots going on there. It's a hundred-million-dollar-a-year budget. And I did an Eagle Scout ceremony, which I always enjoy doing. Then I left on vacation, so that's all I've gotten to share about that.
Ms. Sellers?
I'll defer at this time.
Mr. Sterling?
Thank you. Uh, well, Mr. Cavalier offered his congratulations. I'll offer my condolences as I'm being selected. Know what that can be like, um, with the scheduling. A lot of the viewers, those in the audience will notice, I just shed a lot of the committees on which I serve. Not an easy decision. The Finance and Budget Committee have been part of it for, since I've been on the board, through a lot of what were some of the most financially troubling times that both the nation and the Commonwealth and our counties faced putting together the budget. But it is time for new blood to be on that, that board, as well as on infrastructure. And I think you'll note, both with my tenure here on the board of supervisors, as well as on the Commonwealth Transportation Board, that infrastructure's always been something that I've found important as the nation's infrastructure crumbles. I think we've done a very good job of doing everything we can to rebuild the infrastructure and modernize it here in Stafford County, both on transportation, with our schools, and, um, with all the other elements that we have out there. And I think that we're on the right track. And it is time for new blood to serve in those capacities and move us forward. Part of the reason that, uh, had to make that decision is I have accepted a new position, a new job, day job. Elections have consequences. They're not always directly known. In this particular case, the federal election had a consequence for me and that I'll be returning to the Senate Armed Services Committee as the Deputy Staff Director. For those of you who know the Senate Armed Services Committee, its agenda, uh, its chairman, Senator John McCain, and, uh, the pace that it maintains, that will be a very grueling pace. You read the newspapers, you see what's going on in Europe, in Ukraine. You see what's going on in the Middle East. You see what's going on in Asia. You'll get an idea of what my schedule in my life is going to be like over the course of the next several years. It's a committee I started my professional career on twenty years ago as a PSM for readiness. Now I'm returning as the Deputy Staff Director. It's a great job, a great position. My wife has noted the significant pay cut I'll be taking going back into that role, but, um, it is definitely a good service and I'm honored that I was offered that position and accepted it. As a consequence of that, I did have to step off or it was necessary to step off under the committees so that the timing would be there for, uh, the folks of this board to take action. It also means that I will not be ready... It's a little bit hard saving that thought for the Board of Supervisors in November. It's been an honor to serve the people of Rock Hill for the eight years. People of this district, and President's for a district on CTV for eight years. And I want to thank you, all of you, and those I've served. I try to get choked up, but it's really been long, so, thank you.
Mr. Thomas?
Defer.
Mr. Snellings?
Well, I'm not sure how I follow that, uh, but, Mr. Sterling, thank you so much for your service. And we've still got twelve months to serve together. And a lot to do, to get done and a lot will be done, but thank you very much. I want to also thank the rest of the board for their confidence in me. I'll do my best. If you think I'm not doing my best, please give me a swift kick. And, uh, I want to thank Mr. Cavalier. He led us through a very difficult year. Uh, not difficult bad-wise, but difficult busy-wise. It was our three-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary and he represented this board and this county well. And I certainly want to thank him for his service. Thank you, Mayor Clerk.
Mr. Schumate?
Defer any comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Mr. Romanello?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, a couple of quick items that I wanted to bring to the board's attention. We learned, uh, this morning that we received a $50,000 grant from the Commonwealth of Virginia for our purchase of development rights program, which will match with the board's allocation toward that. We continue to pursue other funding through other avenues, uh, for that, uh, program. Uh, Monday night, the twelfth, in this room at 7:00 PM, we're having, uh, as part of our Economic Development Strategic Plan, a forum on retail. The public is invited and welcome to participate as we begin, as we work to grow our retail offerings in the county. That's seven o'clock, January twelfth, uh, which is, uh, Monday night. The Sheriff Jet and I have been working with, uh, the city manager and, uh, the police chief. Uh, the city is about to, um, begin a study, or has begun a study, on replacing their aging public safety, uh, communication system. And they have asked as part of that if they could look to partnering with the county. Both the sheriff and I think that's an excellent idea. And so we've begun those conversations with the city as well as with, uh, University of, uh, Mary Washington. So there'll be more to come with, uh, lots of details yet to be worked out to the Public Safety Committee and then to the, to the full board, but we think that's a real, a regional partnership opportunity and, uh, if we can make it work, would save the county money, uh, in the long run. Uh, the chairman had asked for a very brief update on things with Lake Mooney and Mr. Smith is here to make that presentation. As he comes forward, I would say the only agenda change that we have today is the deletion of Item Eight, which will come back to the board at a later date, which would authorize the county administrator to advertise a public hearing for the lease assignment of Station Nine.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Michael Smith. I'm the Director of, uh, Utilities. Um, Lake Mooney's been in operation since December thirteenth, the, our last board meeting. The water treatment facility has supplied fifty-six million gallons into our system. So far, with an average of about 2.8 million gallons a day. The Able Lake Water Treatment Facility has been taken out of service on December sixteenth and that staff moved over to, to Lake Mooney. Um, the Lake Mooney facility is now supplying all the water for South Stafford. We continue to pump out of the river to fill the reservoir at an average rate of about 20 million gallons a day. The reservoir is currently at a pool elevation level of about 194 feet, which is equivalent to a surface area of 230 acres and about 1.77 billion gallons. At this level, every six inches is equal to about 40 million gallons. Um, as the reservoir fills and expands, it'll become more for each inch. By the time the reservoir is full, at 5.5 billion gallons at 226 feet, every six, six inches will be equivalent to about 80 million gallons at that time. Um, the plant manager, Mount Siler, has stated that his crew is learning to feel the operations as every plant has a few different quirks and he says that it's going quite well and they're very happy. I brought a couple of pictures to show you the filling of the reservoir. Can I have a computer, please? Um, this is back in March of 2014 when we first started. Once we hit a certain elevation, which is about 180 there, we stopped until we could test the treatment plant. And then in December, we began filling again. And this is just last month. We still have quite a ways to go. We're at, well, like I said, 194, 226 will be the height that we go to. So right about where the edge of the trees are will be the final elevation will be, but you can see there's been a drastic difference.
Joe Brito's house.
If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
When do you, when do you anticipate the, the lake to be full? What is it? Do you have a date there?
Um, we hope this spring, early spring. Depending on how mighty the river is, if the river's too mighty, we don't pump, but we anticipate being able to pump through the, um, the winter, so we're anticipating by the end of March.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from Mr. Smith? Thank you.
It's three, it's three, three inches a day, right? Is that about, is that how much you're going up? You said 20 million gallons a day, 40 million gallons equals six inches.
At this time, right? As it expands, it'll be less and less, yeah. So it'll take longer.
Anything else, Mr. County Administrator?
Oh, sir, that concludes my report.
We'll move to the Consent Agenda. Does any member want to pull anything from Consent? Seeing no one, do I have a motion to pass Consent? Second?
Second.
Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Consent Agenda passes, I'm assuming, Mr. Sterling, seven to zero. We need to get his clicker checked.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think it would be good form, sir, too, for the, the board to vote to delete Item Eight, just to amend the agenda.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to amend the agenda deleting Item Number Eight?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion carries seven, nothing. Consider dates for the Board of Supervisors Annual Planning Meeting. Dates in mind, Mr. County Administrator?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, that's, it's, it's up to you all. This is our annual January meeting where we focus on big-picture issues, the budget certainly, and getting your guidance on that, so...
Mr. Thomas?
I want to say two years ago, when we were in a situation that nobody switched, we skipped this meeting. So it, I thought that was an option.
I have a motion? Second?
I have a motion and a second to skip this meeting.
We're not skipping, I guess, on scheduling.
Not scheduling, thank you.
No, let's skip.
Well, does the rest of the board concur with this? Do I have, do I have any other comments? It's a good idea, but we will not have a planning meeting. Well, he's, he's, he's looking, he's got that puzzled look on his face, so maybe we better ask the county administrator for his opinion.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think, uh, that meeting is very helpful, uh, and, uh, uh, but we can certainly do it as part of the board's regular meeting schedule. Just, just means those meetings would be longer. And that, and the, the key issues that, uh, we would appreciate your guidance on, the budget and the CIP, as we look to bring those to you in March. Also, the Planning Commission has identified a couple of key issues that they need the board's guidance on, UDAs in particular. Again, we can begin to tackle those at your, uh, January twentieth meeting if you'd like to.
Well, Mr., first of all, the guidance we gave you last year would be the same guidance we gave you this year.
Well, not necessarily.
It's going to be very similar. And UDAs, we can beat that up all day long. We keep telling them, telling them what we want them to do and they keep coming back with other ideas.
Okay, Mr. Cavalier, you got any comment?
Well, we did meet, uh, Gary and I met with the, um, Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair, and they do have specific things they would like to discuss with us. Those things that are near and dear to your heart, especially, Mr. Milley. So I think it may be beneficial to further the instructions that we have that, uh... They want clarity from us and I think that would define that.
I'm, I'm going to, uh, that's fine, but what I see is I see us saying, "Do this", and them saying, "Well, we don't really want to do that. We want to do this." That's what I keep seeing and it's back and forth constantly. And we're, "No, just, just do this for us. That's what we're asking to do." They can, they're, they're allowed to do whatever they want. They can, they, they can initiate changes to the UDAs, I think, without our permission. They just, and run, they, they have, they're, they're a pretty strong group, but, but let's do it your way. But I, that's, I'm just seeing things a little differently.
Have any other comments on whether to have or not have a meeting? Mr. Sterling?
I, I would say not have the meeting in terms of the UDA issue. I agree with Mr. Milley on where the Planning Commission really comes down is, tell them what you want them to come back and recommend on a specific issue and they go off into so many other things. So I don't think we need to have a specific meeting on that. I think the infrastructure, economic, or community and economic development can deal with that. I think Finance and Budget can deal with the issues of the budget and, uh, CIP, so... I think the committee's structure is geared towards being able to handle the various issues that county administrators are talking about getting guidance from. The board hasn't changed, so while the guidance may get refined, not dramatically.
Any other comments? Ms. Bomke?
I mean, based on what I'm hearing from the county administrator, he's saying that it would be helpful for staff. And, I mean, I hear what you all are saying, but, um, it kind of sets the tone for our meeting moving forward and I think that the retreat is important. Um, it's an opportunity where we all have a chance to get together and when you try to add things in to other Board of Supervisor meetings, it's, there are so many other things on the docket that they're not, it's not going to get the attention that it's warranted. So, um, I would be in favor of it.
Any other comments? Mr. Thomas?
I get a lot of complaints from people that can't hear us because some of us are speaking into the mic and some aren't. So we're volumeing up and down, so...
Thank you. Please pull your mics up close. Any other comments? Well, I, you know, I, uh, I've been to a lot of these, they call them retreats. I don't like to use that term. More the planning sessions, what we have. And I understand what Mr. Milley and Mr. Sterling are saying concerning UDAs. That can be handled, Planning Commission. I do feel though the budget is going to be a little bit different this year. We're going to have a rather challenging budget, uh, at least from what we're getting out of the Commonwealth. And the CIP could be very challenging. May I offer that rather than having a half-day Saturday or something like that, we might want to consider getting together for just a couple hours in the afternoon with nothing else on the agenda? Would, would the board agree to that? We start at three and work through to six and then have the regular evening meeting? Would that be acceptable? Mr. County Administrator, would that work for you?
Absolutely. Anytime is fine, anytime. I would mention, Mr. Chairman, that right now, if that's the board's pleasure, on the 20th of January, we have only one public hearing.
Okay.
It's, has to do with an easement out at the landfill property that could be moved to February, so we could leave that night open if that's the board's pleasure.
Does that sound good to the rest of the board, that night?
Yes.
Okay. Let's set it for that evening. Thank you. Okay. Last item on the agenda, public hearing, planning and zoning, consider conditional use permit to allow a drive-through facility on 1.8 acres, Zone B2, George Washington District. Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. I'm Jeff Harvey, the Director of Planning and Zoning. May I have the computer, please? This application is case number CUP 14150372, conditional use permit for a drive-through facility for a proposed restaurant known as Freddy's Frozen Custard and Steak Burgers. The property is currently Zone B2 Urban Commercial, is known as parcel 45T-2A. It's a little over an acre in size, and the applicant is Silver Companies. This is the site highlighted in red, and as you see from the zoning map, all the surrounding properties are Zone B2 Urban Commercial. The existing zoning was first established back in the 1970s. This property had been formally used as a truck stop, and it's a B2 zone without proffers. This is the aerial photography for the area and shows the existing conditions. In this location here, we have an existing Panera restaurant. We also have a McDonald's restaurant at this location, and there's a gas station here and a multi-tenant building in this location, and the target shopping center is located here within the Carter's Crossing development. Excuse me, running into some technical issues. This is the generalized development plan for the project. It shows a proposed building which would be a little under 10,000 square feet in size with three tenants. The proposed Freddy's is located on the left side of the building with the drive-through facility. There are three existing access points that serve the property. We have an existing entrance located near Interstate 95 and South Gateway Drive in this location here. This allows for traffic coming off the interstate to make a left turn into the site, as well as traffic coming down Stansted Road to make a right turn into the site, and then this will also allow for exits down Stansted Road to a full-service intersection at the confluence of Stansted Road and South Gateway Drive. There's also a right turn-in lane that serves the property as well off of South Gateway This diagram shows with the general development plan, the stacking lane that's required for the drive-through. Our county code requires that there be a minimum of 150 feet of stacking. This shows the proposed stacking lane in relation to the drive-through window and demonstrates that it meets the requirements of the drive-through stacking lane standards. There are proposed conditions with the permit that would require the drive-through design to be shown in accordance with the GDP. Staff and the Planning Commission have reviewed that and find it advantageous based on its location and circulation pattern throughout the site. There would also, through the use permit, we would prohibit any additional access points on the South Gateway Drive. There would be directional signage installed pursuant to a general development plan sheet, which is included in the staff report, which basically directs people on the property to the location of the drive-through window, and also has a no entrance sign closer to Stan, South Gateway Drive. It would require coordination of design and color of the drive-through canopies with the primary building, and also have standard conditions for prohibiting carnival-style banners and balloons and other attention-getting devices. Staff would note that during the Planning Commission discussion, there was some question about the architectural designs for the building. As you may recall, last year, the board amended the code to stipulate that in highway corridor overlay zones, all buildings have to meet the neighborhood design standards requirements of the comprehensive plan. Initially, there was a condition that was proposed by staff to stipulate the architectural designs for the site. However, that was later withdrawn because it is an ordinance requirement that they have to abide by the standards. The comprehensive plan in this area recommends this overall vicinity for an urban development area as well as redevelopment area. This proposed building and site doesn't quite meet the intent of the urban development area and redevelopment area from the standpoint of scale and density. Both plans recognize this area for commercial activity, but envision multi-story buildings. Part of the general development plan does meet some of the RDA recommendations in that there is adequate pedestrian access. Also, there's outdoor dining areas shown with both this proposed restaurant and also another restaurant that could be located on the far end of the building. And that's some of the recommendations of the redevelopment area plan, is to try to draw people closer to the street, into the ground level, to enhance pedestrian activity as well as sense of community. The overall development of this area is in contrast with what the redevelopment area plans call for, as well as the UDA. If we were to try to fit this project into that scheme, it wouldn't work very well due to the existing development pattern. It would require a whole redevelopment of the entire area, which is, at this point in time, staff believes is not practical. Regarding the positives, the staff feels that it's, the drive-through is consistent with the development pattern of the area. We feel that the conditions can mitigate impacts to surrounding properties, and we note that all this development on this property will have to be compatible with the neighborhood design standards. Though it's not in conformance with the UDA and the RDA, fully in compliance, staff feels that overall imbalance, this site is not an overall negative, it's a positive for the community. And in summary, we, staff recommends adoption of the Resolution R1503 to approve the use permit with conditions. The Planning Commission in its deliberations recommending unanimously that the board approve this case as well.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Any questions for Mr. Harvey? I'll defer to Mr. Thomas, your district, sir.
Do you happen to know offhand what the floor area ratio is, like at Quantico Corporate Center?
Mr. Thomas, I do not. I'd have to research that.
This one is .1 something or other. In order to meet this standard of the UDA, it had to be .4.
Correct.
Which means it had to go vertical, and
Yes.
We clearly see that's not going to happen here, so this is yet another example of why we need to adjust the UDAs. So add that to the list of things that they're looking at, you know? I think what you're getting to is the real point of the problem. In the highway corridor overlay district, maybe the UDA concept doesn't work, because we're not going to put six-story buildings right there in that intersection, so. I don't like to vote for things that are against the comp plan, but I believe this is against the UDA aspect, which I believe we all are getting towards some sort of resolution on, so.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Does the applicant wish to speak? Please come forward, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Scott Little. I'm Vice President and Director of Development for the Silver Companies in Fredericksburg and for Carter's Crossing on Route 17 in Stafford. Appreciate very much your time. I also want to say congratulations to your appointments and nominations, or your elections, and also, just, I'm impressed, constantly am impressed by the number of boards and the way that you all participate beyond this horseshoe in public service. It is rather daunting. I hope the public sees that as well. I value your time, so I'm not going to take much of it. Mr. Harvey and staff have done a really exceptional job and a very comprehensive review of our application. We've worked very closely with Mike Giraffe and staff to come up with a great project, what we think is a really great project. As Mr. Harvey said, it's a building of just under 10,000 square feet on almost the last remaining parcel in Carter's Crossing, just east of the Panera Bread that we also developed. Our efforts on this site have been lengthy and ongoing for really years now, and coming out of, you know, a struggling real estate development recovery and an economic recovery, we're pretty thrilled about this project and this opportunity and this building. We have envisioned, and we're getting interest now in this development, very strong brands, national brands, like Panera Bread, Anytime Fitness, and Carter's Crossing next to the Aladdin, and Pet Smart is doing very well. This particular building, the site is situated, it really is, it's obviously, it's a gateway project coming off of 95. It sits very proud, so we think that the good, strong national brands will do well there and be a good traffic driver to the other tenants in that development and in that corridor. We are a little worried about Freddy's Frozen Custard. It's a national brand, started in the 50s, family-owned, a little over 100 units now nationwide. It is, with no disrespect to our fast-food friends, this is a quick casual restaurant, which is pretty dramatically different. Their focus is on very fresh production of their meals, you know, they're not made in advance. They have a very strong emphasis on hospitality. They try to create an environment where people go, where people like to be. As Mr. Harvey said, there's some very nice outdoor seating. We anticipate outdoor seating on the other end of this building as well. There's pedestrian access between it and Panera Bread and the rest of the development by crosswalks and sidewalks, and, you know, we feel like it will be a very good project. We are dealing with the principles of this company and the franchise are one in the same. And the hours of operation generally run from about 10:00, 10:30 in the morning. They receive early morning deliveries before they open for business, and they also close at about 10 o'clock at night, not a 24-hour operation, and it's meant to be very family-friendly. I think beyond that, Mr. Harvey's presentation speaks well. The one thing I will note is regarding the site plan, and I don't, can I get back to that general GDP on your, keep going back? Yeah, right there. So this, I just wanted to note that in your, in the staff report, we've taken some comments from some of the folks who helped in, both staff and supervisors who helped guide the submission, the application process, and we have pretty exciting changes, I think, to the signage, directional signage, and circulation around this site. I'm going to make a mark here. There's a new sign coming, whoa, that hasn't seemed to want to function. Sorry, Jeff. Thanks. Oh, there you go. There would be a new sign there that directs people who make the entrance off of Route 17 onto South Gateway to the shopping center straight ahead and to the left. That is part of the provided plan within the application. There are signs, no right-turn signs here and wrong-way signs here. VDOT has done a, has a new sign as well that has been funded and will be installed this spring that indicates that folks who are traveling down Stansted directs them how to get back to 17 North and South and also 95, so that folks don't get past this area without knowing which way they should go to get back to 95. There's a speed bump that was installed in the plan that will calm traffic around the site, and this tapered area around the outdoor seating basically puts the two lanes back into one so that there is no front bumper maneuvers around this area. It's just one vehicle accesses that area. So these are, we thought, really positive changes and improvements to circulation, and they're really in direct response to some staff comments and things that we worked through. So I am absolutely happy to answer any questions. We hope you think it's a good project, and I thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Thomas, you have any questions?
Oh, I do. The, well, first one is a comment. The Panera site was tough to get on there and make it work, and I think there's a compliment to your team that you kind of saw what the Planning Commission put that one through.
That's right.
And started with that as a baseline. You didn't, there was no arguing where the trash cans go. We started with that as a baseline, so that made it much easier. And I think we've come up with a pretty good solution. I work right across from Panera, and anywhere between 10:30 and 2:30, there's not a parking spot normally during the work week.
Right.
I anticipate the same thing here. My one question, though, the door overhang and the red harnesses, I'm not sure what you call those.
Yes.
It's just a small piggy thing. I was just curious. The end of those is open, so when you're looking at the building, you see a bunch of metal skeleton framework.
Right.
We kind of talked about that early on, but I don't think it made it into the
Yeah, I think
Is that a possibility, or is that a structural problem?
I think it's a wind load issue that, Mr. Thomas, that is, we did go back and ask that question, and it needs to be, for lack of a better word, wind-permeable, so that they're not being ripped off in high winds. So I think that that is generally the way that those are installed these days. Now, if they're, I will be
If I can find one that looks
Yeah.
This and pointing in that direction, would you be willing to
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
The reason I say that is because this is our gateway. When you get off of 17 there, people who go, you know, west are starting to see a pretty good picture of Stafford. The east side, we're working on that, but we just want to make sure that, you know, because hopefully this is a permanent structure for a long time, hopefully it's a very successful business, we just want to make sure it looks as high-standard as it can without compromising the brand, obviously.
Yeah, I don't think it is a matter of compromising any of the brands that would be on that building. It is, it is a structural wind load issue, is my understanding, but I will pursue that once again and report back to you.
And we'll see when we do the ribbon cutting, what happened.
Very good. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
This time I'll open the public hearing. Anyone from the public wishes to speak? You have three minutes. Anyone on my right?
Paul Wodowski, Apicant Lane, I'm speaking into the microphone so I can, everyone can hear me loud and clear. And I made an observation before I get into this, that the three seats on the left of the chairman are up for election. Now, the floor area ratio is very, very important, because we all know about UDAs. I know you don't know that they're, it stands for underdevelopment areas. That's what it should be. They require multiple-height buildings. You know, I was in Chipotle before I came here, and the capacity was 71 people, and they would have never been able to fit a little drive-through. Just why don't you ride around there? It's pretty similar to trying to fit a square peg in a round hole. Very interesting. I didn't see anything about the tree-savvy areas, you know, where oak is more, worth more dead than alive. And it looks like we're putting up a few more rooftops, and we don't have any treetops that are here. Now, the Planning Commission did a 7-0. Well, you all picked the planning commissioners, so I hear you yap about them. Well, but you're the ones that pick them. No one else picks them. Now, the stacking lane standards just meet the ordinance. Well, isn't it a good idea to just exceed the standards and not just meet them? But that would be a good idea. We don't want to implement any good ideas. When I hear a business like Freddy's coming to town, and we're going to do early morning, well, what are we going to do to the traffic and the schools that might be in that area? Yeah, I'm sure that was all thought out, like everything else is here, but then again, you brought up that you don't need to have planning sessions, or you don't like the word "retreats." This stuff was Zone B2 Urban Commercial in the 1970s for a reason. It was zoned as a truck stop, and it really doesn't matter that Panera, which is a 21st century company, and McDonald's is a 20th century, they're both established brands. This is the first time I heard about Freddy. You know, it's kind of like, holy sheets, you know? It's almost a brother, all red, all red, white, and blue. What's going on? Now, let me see, that was the GDP? Oh, the architectural design must meet neighborhood design standards. What a concept. In closing, the best way to end this is, I love the back page. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors on this sixth day of January 2015, that a conditional use permit pursuant to application CUP day of January 2015, that a conditional use permit pursuant to application CUP 14150372 be and it hereby is denied. If not, it should be deferred because verticality is very, very important. You all missed the boat with verticality in our commuter parking garages. And that was 25 years ago, was the first time I brought that up. Good day.
Does the applicant have any comments rebuttal?
Yes, sir. Yes, please come up. Just to, just to make the point, again, if I didn't say it, that they actually don't open until 10:00 AM, there wouldn't be a morning traffic.
Very good. Thank you.
Very good.
I'll bring it back to the board. This is Mr. Thomas's district. Mr. Thomas, you're a player.
I did have a question for staff. There's a proof of real estate taxes paid, but I believe it's for the first half. Just need somebody to give me a nod that the second half is up to date.
Mr. Thomas, I'd have to check, check into that. I'm pretty, I'm fairly confident that the taxes have been paid for the second half, but I don't have it right here available with me right now.
I thought we were going to make that part of our approval process. That was an issue we had last year. Okay, that's my only question. I move resolution R15-03 for approval.
Have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Sellers. Any discussion? Hearing non-castor votes? Tally the vote. Motion carries seven to zero. That's the end of our business except for closed session. Is that correct, Mr. County Minister? Do you have a motion to go in closed session?
Mr. Chair Luck, to offer a resolution to authorize our closed meeting, whereas the board desires to hold a closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel regarding the zoning variance of 12 Picket Lane, Stafford, Virginia 22556, submitted by Amanda and Ronald Rowe, CL 11000192-00, pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711A7, this discussion may occur in a closed meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Tally the vote. We're in closed session.
Motion to certify?
Second.
All in favor, cast your votes, tally the votes. Motion carries seven to nothing. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Motion to adjourn.
It's a privileged motion, there's no debate.
Cast your votes, tally the vote. We are adjourned.